I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council order for April 22, 2025 at 7:00 P.M. We will be broadcasting live on Northern Berkshire Community Television, Channel 1303. It will also be taped for viewing at a later date. Also, we'll be live on YouTube. The link is youtube.com/NorthAdams. Just click on the "Live," and then on the 2025.04.22 City Council Meeting. We also have a Zoom link available, and that is available in the agenda. I'm going to ask everybody, when they speak tonight, to use their outdoor voice because we do not have mics for the TV. And will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer?
Here.
Bona?
Here.
Green is absent. Fitch?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
Oleskowitz?
Here.
Shade?
Present.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Eight present.
We have a form. Okay, tonight, please rise for a moment of silent remembrance. Tonight, we remember Barbara E. Brita Molti, worked briefly in the North Adams City Assessor's Office.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval of the minutes, March 20, 2025, City Council meeting minutes. We need a motion to postpone to the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing the visitors on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you've reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. Yes, please step up over here to the corner of this table so you can, if the camera can see you, or anywhere the camera can see you. Name and address for the record.
All righty, Josh Valiers, 18 and 1/2 Hall Street. I'm going to try and speak quickly tonight with three agenda items that I'd like to bring attention to. The first that I'd like to speak on is the formation of an Affordable Housing Trust. I'm very happy to see a continuation of this ordinance, which was first brought to the council floor through Counselor Fitch's communication over a year ago. I'm sure everybody in this room understands the gravity of our current housing crisis and has, to some capacity or another, seen the impact on our North Adams community residents. The opportunity for direct overseeing of funds to provide for the development of affordable housing is dire. It should not be passed up, and should be given deft speed in its development. Secondly, I would like to thank the mayor in anticipation of her proclamation supporting Autism Month tonight in the wake of disturbing comments by HHS Secretary Robert Kennedy Jr. and his blatant siding with pseudoscientific eugenics-based rhetoric surrounding autism. I believe this will be a welcome and necessary proclamation in support of many community members on the autism spectrum. Thank you, Mayor, for giving us the time that it deserves. Lastly, I wanted to voice my support and proposal of a sustainability commission. This is an opportunity to think critically about North Adams in innovative and green new ways, and I'm excited, and I'm excited, rather, to see what becomes of these initial discussions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please step up.
Paul Moirity, 46 Johnson Street, North Adams. While I understand the need to look at an Affordable Housing Trust, what's being presented tonight, to me, looks like something that was put together in rush fashion. It looks like something that was just a copy and paste. Took another municipality, probably Pittsfield, because it talks about the documents being recorded in Middle District, and it's just being, it just looks like they copied, they took out Pittsfield and put in North Adams, and all the language is just copying for something with another municipality in mind. There are things in here that talks about the trustee, the trust being comprised of seven members, but later on, it says, to make any changes, four voting members have to vote. So it doesn't say who are the voting members, who aren't the voting members. This was put together by a municipality that had its attorneys looking at it. I really think we need to go through and have our attorneys look at it and make sure it'll be something that will suit North Adams and not another municipality. And that's what I want to stand this time. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else for hearing the visitors? Please step up here, face the camera, and state your name and address for the record.
Okay, is this the right place?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Richard David Green, Green with an E at the end, at 546 Union Street, apartment 20B. And I've got a factual question. I was fascinated by Fitch's letter in today's Eagle, and I thought I might be spotting a misprint there. It said something about 808 deficit in affordable housing units for North Adams. To me, that sounded a little bit unusually large for a town this size. So I hope somebody will answer that in this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing the visitors. Name and address for the record, that's fine.
Hi, I'm Virginia Rio. I'm at 36 Holden Street, and I am here to support the Affordable Housing Trust proposal. I feel that it will create, set in place, a governance and management structure to receive funds and execute projects to make housing affordable for all North Adams residents in a way that we do not, it's a capacity we do not have now. And it indicates that North Adams is ready and committed to addressing the affordable housing challenges in our community so that we have credibility with potential funders. We know that is going to be challenging, but we are showing that we are on the road. And the trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust can provide leadership and collaborate with the community to determine priorities and move forward with funding and projects and, you know, stretch, as the mayor says, extend the capacity of the city staff beyond what it is right now. Do I have more time?
You still have about a minute, yes.
Oh, okay. I have one other issue. This has troubled me since it came up. I do feel that keeping the role of the council and approving the members of committees and commissions is an important statement about the relationship between the council and the mayor, that the relationship of trust, the relationship of collaboration, relationship of working together and being confident in each other. And I think we're sending the wrong message by making all these changes for something that is not a problem, because there has not been a conflict between the council and the mayor on this issue. And I would prefer that it stay in place and that the council continue to have its role. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing the visitors. Yes, please step up. Name and address for the record.
I have to read off the phone.
Yeah, just in the vicinity so the camera can see you.
Yes. Facing this way?
No, no, to one side.
To one side by the table will be fine. Right here? Thank you. Sorry. My name is, my legal name is Jonathan Stinson. I prefer to go by Brisbane Stinson. My address is 124 North Holden Street. Actually, the mayor's neighbor, so good to see you. I'm here today as a resident of North Adams to speak in favor of Counselor Andrew Fitch's discussion of establishing an Affordable Housing Trust for North Adams. Just a little bit of background, according to census.gov, from about 2019 to 2023, the owner occupied housing unit rate in North Adams was about 53.2%. That means that roughly half of all the residents in North Adams own the homes that they live in. However, for the other half, there is a palpable blanket of fear and insecurity regarding housing stability. Over recent years, the housing market has spiked unprecedented costs on a national level. On a local one, residents without access to homeownership are left to wonder if they will be priced out of their own community due to things like continued housing market growth, increases to cost of living fueled by trade policies, unintended negative consequences of a tourism-based economy, and more. An Affordable Housing Trust could provide a much-needed anchor for these individuals by building new housing, renovating existing housing, providing first-time home buyers with down payment assistance, assisting with rent and mortgage payments, and more. An Affordable Housing Trust could help pave an avenue for the residents of North Adams towards housing stability if they need it, and we need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else for hearing the visitors? Council Paper Number 12,0393-2, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Under Chapter 13, Sections 26, 49, and 50, Postpone the Meeting to March 11, 2025.
Move to postpone to the next meeting, the first meeting in May?
Okay, postpone for the first meeting in May?
May 13.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Council Paper Number 12,047, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of North Adams, Chapter 2, Article 22, Section 124, Regarding Submission of the Capital Improvement Plan, Postpone the Meeting to March 25, 2025.
Postpone to the first meeting in May, May 13.
Okay. Counselor Oleskowitz, do you have any updates?
No update. I was just going to do the same as Counselor Blackmer did, just make the motion to postpone to the first meeting in May.
Okay, you want to go ahead and make your motion?
I made it. Postpone to the first meeting in May, May 13.
Okay, postpone to the May. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do you have a second? Discussion, Council?
At the planning board meeting last week, it came up that this was on our agenda, and they are planning on putting it on their agenda for their meeting in May. So I think that since the ordinance involves them, or takes something away from them, we shouldn't move forward too far without input from them.
Okay.
So it's not anything they technically have to approve, but getting their input when they, they expressed interest in having a discussion on it. So I will, it'll be on the agenda. Obviously, I can report on it. There won't be probably an official report because of the timing, I think. Yeah, because their meeting will be the 12.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Council Paper Number 12,0476, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter 2, Articles 26, Human Services Commission, 29, North Adams Commission on Disabilities, 33, North Adams Youth Commission, 36, North Adams Idea Commission, 34, North Adams Public Arts Commission, Chapter 26, Mobile Home Park Rent Control Board, and Chapter 28, Massachusetts Museum of Contemporary Art, Culture and Development Commission, Section 28-2, Appointments, Terms, and Vacancy, Refer to General Government, with a return date of April 22, 2025. Counselor Oleskowitz, do you have?
Make a motion to continue this until the first meeting of May.
Okay, postponed. First meeting in May, second. Any discussion? Counselor Wilkinson?
Could you refresh your memory for those who are looking what this whole thing is all about? This one is dealing with council approval with mayoral appointments. It's just cleaning up the language as to ones that are defined that do not need it, and there's pretty much a language change. Well, thank you, because we read the last three ordinance here, and all it refers to is sections and this and that. For somebody that isn't in the loop here, nobody knows what we're talking about. So I just thought we'd clarify it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And one name. Council Paper Number 12,0481, A Communication from Counselor Fitch, requesting time to discuss the establishment of an Affordable Housing Trust for the City of North Adams, refer to the administration, with a return date of April 22, 2025. Counselor Fitch, do you have an update?
On this section, I don't believe that I do, other than that I've spoken with the mayor, and the mayor is willing to continue to work on this, but we'll shift over to the ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to file this without objection. Council Paper Number 12,0481, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Creating a New Affordable Housing Trust Under Chapter 2, Article 37. Okay, is there a motion?
Move to adopt.
Okay, motion to adopt. Counsel Blackmer, do we have a second?
She seconded it.
You have a second, okay.
I think that any language like this really needs to not just go straight to adopt, and that's not, the motion would be to pass to a second reading. But I think it should either, it should go somewhere for review, whether it's general government, because that's normally who does ordinances. I know they've got a lot on their plate. The other option could be community development, because it's in that realm, but it would probably still have to go back to general government.
That's what I was thinking as well.
So I don't know what other people's thoughts are on it.
Counselor Shade, did you have something to comment?
Yeah, I recommend sending this to general government for review of the language specifically to make sure that the language is aligned with the current ordinances of current commissions.
Okay. Counselor Fitch, would you like to rescind your?
Yes.
Motion?
Thank you. Yeah, I would move to refer this to general government.
Okay, we have a motion to refer to general government. We have a second. Any discussion? Counselor Shade?
We need a return date.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, a suggestive return date would be the second meeting in May, but I'm open to other thoughts about that.
Okay. Counselor Bona?
Yeah, I think they're extending that a little further, as we heard at the beginning. One thing also might be, if it goes to general government and we look it over, at some point, it should go to the solicitor. And so it may take a little longer to get back to us, but my feeling is, after general government looks at it, is that we send it to the solicitor. So when it comes back to us, it's already been approved by the solicitor, instead of us coming back and then sending it back to the solicitor.
Counsel Blackmer?
And I think it's quite possible that this could get continued again, because also May is generally budget season, so some must be focused on that. And while it's an important issue, it's important to get this set up properly, and if it has to take longer, then it takes longer, but it's better to be done right.
Agreed. Counsel Shade?
Yeah, I would actually recommend that we send it to the solicitor first, and then have it come to general government, have the solicitor approve the language that exists, or make recommendations, and then we can figure out what to adopt from there, or send it to both at the same time, just so we can get the process going.
Counsel Blackmer?
I just get a little concerned if they have to, if they get involved in too much in the week, it's going to cost us, because they get paid by the hour. Actually, they get paid by the 12-minute increment, I think.
Counsel Bona?
I'm not so much concerned about costs. I mean, we, you know, I don't like the idea that we're always worried about what we should be sending to the solicitor because of cost. You know, that's the way our budget is set up with the solicitor. But, you know, I mean, you remember in our early days, we sent a lot to the solicitor. Almost everything went to the solicitor to get approved before we approved it to make sure it was written right. We barely do that anymore. That being said, I think, you know, committee makes sense first. Let us work out the wording we feel is correct, and then it goes to solicitor, and then they tweak it to make it more legally correct. So that would be my suggestion. But again, right now, the motion is to send it to general government. I would probably suggest we can keep it at that, and then general government could send it to the solicitor before it comes back, or the motion should be amended, that it goes to general government, followed by the solicitor, with a return date.
Counsel Wilkinson?
Counsel Bona, are you speaking for general government?
Counselor Bona, may I interject? Counselor Bona is being assigned as temporary chair of the General Government Commission?
When are we going to tell the rest of general government?
I was going to announce it tonight, but it's come up a little sooner than I expected.
Understood. Be nice to tell the rest of us that are actually on the committee. Thank you.
Counsel Bona?
That being said, my suggestions had nothing to do with me chairing general government. It was just a suggestion of how the process should flow.
Counsel Blackmer?
Counsel Bona, have you made that, are you making that amendment, or would somebody, would you like somebody to make an amendment to add in, send to the solicitor after general government?
So, sure, I'll make that amendment. Make an amendment to add, followed by sending it to the solicitor in between the return date. So just followed by, you know, so in other words, it goes to general government, followed by the solicitor, so that by the time we get it back, it's gone through committee and solicitor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Counselor Shade?
Yes, would you amend your amendment to include the return date? Because we don't have one yet.
I thought we had in the second meeting.
It was third out, but it wasn't voted on. It wasn't part of the original motion. It was just third out.
So it was for the 27?
Yeah.
Okay. For the second meeting in?
Never mind that.
Counsel Fitch?
I'd love to take a moment to just address some of the questions that the audience had about this, if I may?
Okay.
We're on the amendment.
Oh, yeah, we're on the amendment, so let's go.
After that?
Yeah. Okay, Counsel Shade, did you have another? No. All right, so we have an amendment to send this both to general government and have the solicitor look at it. Am I correct on that one?
No. The amendment is the solicitor.
The amendment is to send it to the solicitor. Okay.
The original amendment was general government. The original motion.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. No.
Okay, one name. Is that amazing? Opposed? We have one opposed. Okay, now back to the original motion. Counselor Shade?
Yeah, first, I want to thank Counselor Fitch for bringing this up. Housing is a crisis in our community, and we need to look at every avenue we can to address it. I think this is a great first start. I think it's something other communities have successfully adopted and have been able to implement and help with housing issues, and I think it's a stone we need to turn over. So I support us doing this and getting this established, and I look forward to discussing further at general government.
Counsel Fitch?
Yes, just a couple of clarifications. A municipal housing trust is something that 40% of Massachusetts municipalities have already implemented, so it is, you know, not something that is new. And it is something that Pittsfield, Gray Barrington, Lenox, Williamstown, at least those communities in the Berkshires already have. So I'm excited about us potentially taking this step to review it through general government and hopefully adopt it at council. A couple of other things, too. The number 808 units that we are behind in our community came up earlier this evening. That number came from our housing needs assessment that North Adams commissioned, so I wasn't a part of that, but I believe that that number is accurate. It is a staggering number of units that we are behind as a community, which is why I think that number is so surprising. Another couple of things. Affordable Housing Trust, you know, like I said, they're pretty common around the Commonwealth. A lot of them look pretty similar in the way that they were set up. Somebody from the audience brought up copying and pasting. There was absolutely copying and pasting. That is the honest truth. What I did is I looked at several different ordinances that different communities across the state had done, and then I kind of pulled it back to the Berkshires, so kind of compared Williamstown and Pittsfield, and using the influence of like Cambridge that I had checked out. But I just feel that Cambridge, Cambridge's ordinance wouldn't necessarily suit North Adams', but Pittsfield and Williamstown, a little bit closer. So what I did is kind of took the parts of those commissions that I thought made sense. They're very similar anyway, and then made it a little bit more North Adams. However, I did make a mistake in there, which I will make an amendment for in a second, or propose an amendment for in a second, which was the land court in the latter section. I put the wrong one in there, so apologies for that.
Okay. Real quick, Counsel Blackmer, did you have?
I was going to suggest if he wants to make amendments to the text, the actual ordinance, that we just wait and do that during the conversation of the actual ordinance with the general government committee.
Okay.
So that when they come back, they may have a whole new, you know, they're going to have a revised ordinance, and that's what we'll work on at the time.
Actually, that would be a better path, I would think. Okay, yeah.
I'm sorry, I just.
No, no.
Seems to be easier.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? Okay. On the ordinance as amended, do we have a motion? We already have?
We already made the motion.
A motion, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Council Paper Number 12,0485, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter 13, Section 1341, Subparagraph D, Subparagraph 2, entitled "Widens, the Traffic Control Signals Passed to a Second Reading and Published as Required by Law at the Meeting of April 8, 2025." And just to remind everybody, this is to remove the no-turn-on-red sign that is located on the southeasterly corner of Center and Holden Streets, so that if an emergency vehicle needs to clear that intersection, traffic sitting at that light, Center Street is very narrow, and will be able to make a right-hand turn on a red light to clear the intersection.
Move to adopt.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt?
Second.
And a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Eight aces.
Motion passes. Okay, Communication from President Sapienza, presenting a fee increase for parking permits in Appendix D, Section D-6, entitled Police Department Fees and Fines. I will file the communication without objection, and I will read the communication. Dear fellow counselors, the Traffic Commission approved an increase in the permit parking rates at its April 9, 2025 meeting. Commission Chair Mary Ann King had stated that there hasn't been an increase in the parking, permit parking rates in over 17 years. To date, these fees have not been added to Appendix D in our ordinances, and the commission unanimously approved the following rate schedule. And the Center Street Lot, a daytime permit will increase $5 to $35. A 24/7 permit will increase $5 to $24, or I'm sorry, $40. A three-day parking pass will increase $10 to $15. The St. Anthony Lot, from November 1st to April 30th, will be, for a daytime permit, $20, again, an increase of $5. The 24/7 permit, $20, an increase of $5. The three-day parking pass, an increase of $10 to $15. The St. Anthony Lot, May 1st to October 31st, the daytime permit will increase to $25. That's a $5 increase. The 24/7 permit will be $20, again, a $5 increase, and the three-day parking pass to $15. That is a $10 increase. I am suggesting that these rates will become effective 1 June 2025, and I've already stated that the daytime permits and the 24/7 permit will increase by $5. The three-day parking pass will increase by $10. I recommend upon review that the proposed schedule be added to Appendix D of our ordinance. Okay.
Is that the communication?
That is the communication.
So without objection, you're going to file?
I am going to file without objection, yes. I thought I said- I thought I said that at the beginning.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Council paper number twelve thousand four eighty-six, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the city of North Adams, appendix D, section D dash six, Police Department Fees and Fines for Parking Permits and Passes, do we have a motion?
Move to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law, I don't think it needs a lot more discussion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Counsel Morrow seconded, Counsel Bona, you had your hand up.
I would vote against this for, probably not the reason it's right in front of us, but especially because of the Center Street parking lot. You know, for years, I've been pushing for other options of how to collect besides just meters, you know, there's mobile apps out there, and, you know, we're going to be charging, we're raising the permit fees in Center Street, when yet most of Center Street you can park for free, where they're not enforced, because there are no meters, there are no kiosks, so unless you permit, you pay, and you're going to get increased, or you can just not park in the permit, or you're not going to sticker, and you aren't being charged, so I just feel, you know, I'm fine with it passing, but it's just for something I've been asking for for several years, I think, you know, we can get more money from Center Street with some simple signs and the new mobile app center out there, so just throwing that out there.
Okay, Counsel Shade?
I'm also going to vote against this, I think increasing the three-day parking pass is a problem, because we don't offer one-day parking passes anymore, and without a one-day parking pass for five dollars, if you're going to increase it to fifteen dollars, someone just needs to park overnight during the parking ban, now you're charging them an extra ten dollars to do that to park for five hours, it doesn't make sense, it's not a good, it's, it's not a good look, and I don't support it, so I'm not in favor of this increase.
Okay, Counsel Oleskowitz?
My, this is a comment in the disclosure, as I do live on Main Street, and I do use the Center Street parking lot, so it would probably be wise for me to abstain, don't vote.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to pass this, publish as required by law and pass to a second reading, all in favor?
Roll call, please.
I will do a roll call.
Blackmore?
Yes.
Bona?
No.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Abstain.
Shade?
No.
Wilkinson?
No.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Four ayes, three nays, one abstain.
I'm sorry, did you call, Counsel Morrow?
Yep, I did.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear your answer. So, wait, we have one, two, three, four.
Four ayes.
Four ayes, three nays, we have one abstain. Council paper number twelve thousand four eighty-eight, a communication from Counselor Fitch requesting a discussion regarding sustainability, planning, and establishing a sustainability commission in North Adams. I will file the communication without objection, Counselor Fitch, would you like to read your communication?
Certainly, it's Earth Day, I could not have this conversation today, so I wanted to have this conversation about potentially setting up a sustainability commission. Now, it's not important to me that North Adams has a specific sustainability commission, what is important to me is that we have a sustainability plan and that we're working towards that plan, and that could mean anything in terms of energy transfer, in terms of optimizing our buildings, changing out light bulbs, I mean, it could mean so many different things for our community, but I'd love for these conversations to happen, and I'd love for them to be put into a plan and then implemented. Something that a sustainability commission has done in other communities is just that, to put together a plan and provide recommendations for implementation. I'm just going to read two very quick things that surrounding communities have done, well, surrounding-ish communities have done, Greenfield has a sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee, and it, its purpose is to facilitate the implementation of the city's sustainable, sustainable master plan by identifying, recommending, and implementing programs that foster a vital, sustainable, and resilient community, focusing on three interlocking aspects of sustainability, the economy, the environment, and society, which I think is kind of wholesome. Pittsfield, they have a sustainability commission, this commission is charged with investigating means to increase the overall use of efficiency in the city, to decrease the use of energy from non-renewable sources, and to encourage the use of energy from renewable sources in the areas set out in subsection, yada yada. B, assessing current energy use levels and projecting future energy use levels in Pittsfield in the areas of industry, commerce, institutions, residential dwellings, transportation in municipal dwellings, and the purpose of identifying opportunities to encourage or provide incentives. C, and there's only one more after this, by the way, evaluating current land use policies for their effectiveness in promoting energy conservation and stimulating the use of alternative forms of energy, being attentive to the relationship between transportation and land use, built areas and open space, as well as to the configuration of buildings and street plantings. And D, the last one, drafting for consideration by the city council, ordinances, rules, regulations, policies, and programs necessary for the implementation of commission's recommendations. So, this is the conversation that I wanted to have, and this is what I found that other communities are doing, what do you, what do you all think? I don't have an ordinance to propose here tonight, I really just wanted to start this discussion tonight.
Thank you, any questions for Counsel Fitch? Counsel Bona?
So, while I can't say I'm not specifically opposed or in favor of this, as is what's in front of us, my concern is when you create commissions, you know, will they be used? And are we duplicating something else that might already be happening within administrative staff, administrative departments, other organizations that are in Berkshire County that work with cities and towns, you know, I just feel you, you make a commission, and then, you know, people get appointed to it, some of these commissions sit there, you know, sort of not doing a whole lot, after a while, members come, members leave, you know, you got to fill them again, and, and then I feel sometimes they get bypassed, like, for example, could a lot of what was mentioned be something that the Community Development Committee be, be discussing? You know, I look at recently and why we had a great group in here, but for example, recently when the, two, three meetings ago, when the resolution came in for trans, that to me should have went through Ideas Commission, that's what Ideas Commission I felt was partly there for, and yet it seemed like the council just sort of bypassed that, so if we're going to create commissions, are we going to use them, or are we just going to be duplicating or bypassing them at times when we feel the commission isn't doing what we want? So, that's just our, our concern.
Counsel Blackmore?
Thank you, I, I do think that the language that Counsel Fitch referred to, mentioned that the commission would make referrals or recommendations to the council, which is also my understanding where the resolution in support declaring the city an LGBTQ plus IA, community, sanctuary community, came from the IDEA Commission, so I, I think that happens. I would suggest, and you already mentioned it, that we discuss this at the Community Development Committee level for now, would be where it would start, but obviously, we don't want just three people giving input, we want other counselors and the public to tell us what they think, the administration to say what they think on this issue. I don't know if, again, I'm not sure if we need to establish a commission or a committee, or if we get a working group that comprises members, certain staff members of the city, certain members of the community that are interested, and then a certain people from the council, and maybe some of the other commissions out there, I mean, Conservation Commission might have something to say about this, or somebody from that, that commission, so I think it's a good idea to at least talk about it.
Counsel Shade?
I think that I agree with Counsel Blackmore that this should start in Community Development, but also start with a conversation with the administration, perhaps a sustainability report from the administration, giving us an update on what's currently being done and what, what needs to be done better, to determine where we are at as a city on sustainability, to actually establish some goals before we set up a whole new potential commission on this, referring back to, you know, our, our plan for the city, and the Plan Twenty Thirty, and, you know, the goals of the administration, I think taking that into account is extremely important, so through the chair to the mayor, could you give us any update on your end from the administration on sustainability aspects?
Yes, so about three or four years ago, we had an audit done, more energy savings and electricity throughout, I'm not right in my big girl's voice, through all of our buildings, one of the reasons why we're here tonight is because we are doing a project at City Hall through Green Communities for Insulation and Energy Efficiency, so we have looked at those, we do try to apply for any grants, or take advantage of any savings, rebates, those kind of things, we've done all the lighting in City Hall, we did that two years ago, and some of our other buildings, but there's still a lot of work to do. When I first became mayor, I went to one meeting with the Green Community folks, I think, I see some of them in the audience, that's a really great group that we really need to invest more in, but I'm, whether you call it a working group or a committee, I'm interested in working with anyone, but we do have some of this work already threaded in our work as we move along, most of it falls under the administrative officer, but if it gets tagged through Community Development as we evolve positions, that's fine, too. Whether we call it a working group or a commission, it doesn't matter to me, happy to dig in more on that topic. I do agree with Counsel Bona that sometimes we create these commissions and we need to engage them, if you want people to stay engaged, we need to engage them as well, so counsel's pleasure, but we are doing some of the work already.
Okay, moving on.
Do we need to refer this?
I make a motion to refer to Community Development Committee with a return date of the second meeting in June, which is, I think, June twenty-fourth, but I don't remember.
Yes, twenty-fourth.
June twenty-fourth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council paper number twelve thousand four eight-nine, communication number one oh four from Mayor Macksey requesting time to present a proclamation in support of autism law. I will file the communication without objection and turn it over to the mayor.
If you look at the agenda, that's not really me.
It's not really me. Mayor Macksey.
It says Maggie.
Maggie. Well, it says Maxie, well, so it does.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, I still like you. So, good evening, everyone, today I'd like to read a proclamation acknowledging Autism Awareness Month, whereas autism spectrum disorder is a complex developmental condition that affects communication, behavior, and social interaction, and is estimated to affect one in thirty-six children in the United States, whereas individuals with autism contribute greatly to the diversity and vibrancy of our community, and their unique talents and perspectives enhance our schools, workplaces, and neighborhoods, and whereas the city of North Adams is committed to creating an inclusive community that recognizes and supports individuals with autism and their families, and whereas raising public awareness about autism is critical in promoting acceptance, understanding, and opportunities for people on the autism spectrum to reach their full potential, and whereas during the month of April, communities across the nation observe Autism Awareness Month to promote advocacy, inclusion, and support of the autistic community, and whereas local organizations, educators, healthcare providers, and families in North Adams work year-round to support and empower individuals with autism through education services and compassionate care. Now therefore, I, Jennifer A. Macksey, M-A-C-K-S-E-Y, of the city of North Adams, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-five as Autism Awareness Month.
Okay. All right, committee reports and minutes. Counselor Shade?
Yes, I wanted to bring up that the IDEA Commission currently has three vacancies, so if there are people, members of the community who are willing and would like to serve on the IDEA Commission, we have multiple vacancies that we need to fill as soon as possible, and we'd love to have you join, so please be willing, and if you are, you can go online and fill out an application, or contact Mayor Macksey's office and apply to be on the commission through there, or reach out to me, but we'd love to get those seats filled, thank you.
Okay, any other committee reports and minutes, hearing done. We have no licenses. This time, we will have open forum, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance, as a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you reach your two-minute limit to signal that your time is ended, and as courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks, anybody for open forum. Please step over here so the camera can see you, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Peter Day, one nineteen Summit Avenue, North Adams. I stood here six weeks ago to request a resolution for unified statement from the council, the proposed statement reads, "We as elected representatives of the city of North Adams condemn the concept of an American monarch or dictator and any all policies that undermine our Constitution, the structure and function of our democracy, and the rule of law, both here and across the globe. To date, the council has not acted on it. In those six weeks, forty-two days, we have descended into a constitutional crisis, onto the precipice of tyranny. America is increasingly becoming a pariah, a distrusted ally and trading partner, we are deporting people without due process to concentration camps at El Salvador, and we started an economically suicidal global trade war heading towards recession. All of this and more dramatically impacts and harms our city. The preservation of our Constitution and democracy is precisely your pledge of allegiance. As city councilors, your leadership represents North Adams, decisions made in this room extend beyond administration and finances. Decisions most often in the form of resolutions, like the one you passed that created a safe haven for our LGBTQ plus community, provide a way to define the character and values of our community. They are the soul of governance, they broadcast who we are as a community and create perceptions that will either welcome or repel visitors and people considering moving here. My request for a unified statement to preserve and protect our Constitution supersedes the resolution creating a sanctuary city, for without the Constitution, all of our civil rights and personal liberty are at risk. At this, at this time, I'm asking you to put this resolution on the agenda and vote to pass it, telling the world that North Adams supports our Constitution and democracy as it has stood for the past two-hundred-and-fifty years. What I'm asking for is a small ask for a symbolic statement, it is the least you can do to honor those who gave their lives defending our liberty. Thank you."
Thank you. Anybody else on open forum?
I'm Virginia Reel, thirty-six Holden Street, and I just want to reinforce a message that I delivered earlier about the budget. I feel it's critical, especially in the current federal environment that we have, that the council and the community understand grant funding, and where it stands, and how much it is, and how it might be impacted. I think that there can be interactions between that loss of grant funding and the regular budget that is reviewed. The second thing I said earlier, I'll say again, and I think it will sound contradictory, when you are worried about money, maybe you think, I shouldn't be thinking about my, the college fund for my children, or I shouldn't be thinking about something larger, but this is a time when that is really important, to think about larger issues, to not make incremental decisions now that will deter the city from growing its economic base and being able to thrive, and I think that should be constantly in the discussion of all aspects of the city budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yes, name and address for the record?
Yes, Richard Green, five forty-six Union Street, apartment twenty-B, and I discovered to my discomfort a couple of weeks ago that this town no longer publishes- And I discovered to my discomfort a couple of weeks ago that this town no longer publishes a neat little book of official information yearly on whatever is happening in town officiality. And because I don't have any such little book now, I have to ask Keith, a couple of months ago, I thought I heard you at a meeting say that the town gets nut 49 million a year right now for its coffers, but also gets an extra 28 million from the state. Did I get that right or did I get that wrong? I have no place to look it up.
Yeah, we can't have any back and forth on this.
I'll address that when I see.
Yeah, we can't have back and forth during this time. This is, you can ask the question, but we'll answer it.
Okay.
That would be considered deliberation, which is a violation of open meeting law. They may or may not answer your question, you may, somebody may follow up with you after, or we may be able to answer it, but we can't deliberate.
You mean, you can't actually answer according to the rules?
Correct.
Not during this time. They can respond to your question after.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum? Mayor's updates. Mayor?
To respond to Mr. Green, just real quick, I would be happy to get you an annual report. We are behind in publishing and we're about two years behind. I can't quote what Mr. or Councilor Bona said, that you recall, but I'm happy to get you an annual report. So I'll either mail it off to you or you can stop in the office next week and we'll get you the most recent copy, okay? We're under construction at City Hall. I'm hoping tomorrow, we're waiting for one more test to come in tonight, so I'm hoping we'll be open for regular hours tomorrow. But happy to get that for you, okay? Hello?
Hello.
This wasn't too bad. So nothing goes as planned. As I said earlier, we are having the insulation project. It was supposed to be done by now and it's not. So we're hoping tomorrow we can open for regular hours. We're waiting for one more test to be done, which should be done around nine o'clock tonight, and then we will be fully insulated, we hope, in City Hall. The reason why we moved you is we were concerned that the smell would be really an inconvenience and unsafe for not only our councilors but our community. So thank you for your patience and your cooperation. Hopefully, we will be back to our normal practice tomorrow morning at eight o'clock. With that, I just want to alert everyone that the North Adams Police Department will be conducting what we call low light, no light firearms training at our shooting range. All of the neighbors have been notified. This training will occur on Monday, May 5th, Tuesday, the 6th, Wednesday, the 7th, and Monday, the 12th, from 5:30 to 9:30. In the event of inclement weather, we will reschedule. But again, those days are Monday, the 5th, Tuesday, the 6th, Wednesday, the 7th, and Monday, the 12th, from 5:30 to 9:30 PM. I'm sure you will get calls about this, so I just wanted to make sure you are aware. There's a requirement of our police department to do some night shooting, and that's what they will be doing at our range on Patterson Road. Also, just want to remind everyone, it is budget season. I'll be reaching out to the Finance Committee probably this weekend with your blackmail dates from May into early June. And then I had a question, I know we're not supposed to ask questions, but I was a little bit confused, Council Blackmore, and I didn't catch everything you said about the planning board, because as I came up to the agenda tonight, I see a letter that was sent to you, Council Sapienza, from the planning board, so.
That will be read during correspondence.
Perfect. I will wait then. So that's all I have for tonight, but again, I thank you all for your patience in moving us over here, but we'll be back to normal hopefully tomorrow.
Liaise on updates and councillor updates. Council Shay.
Yes, I want to reiterate one more time, the IDEA commission is looking for volunteers to serve on the commission. Again, we have three vacancies and that makes it difficult for us to get a quorum for meetings. So if you are interested or able to serve, please put your name forward, we'd love to have you. Secondly, I want to thank everybody while I was away, while I was out, and I'm glad to be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Bona?
Yes. To respond to Mr. Green's, I believe what the discussion was, and it was probably during a budget meeting, so the budget that the council approves is based on the taxes that we raise, but however, the city does spend additional money beyond that. Much of that comes in with grants, the state and federal funding, and I believe, you know, I can't, I don't have the exact figure, and maybe the mayor has a better idea, but I believe it's almost an additional 20 million, 25 million?
We're closer with 28.
28? 28, 28 million that we get. Again, that can change year to year, especially if you say next year might be a lot less with federal funding, but, so, you know, the city, while the budget we approve is in the 40s, we actually are spending in the 60s with all the other additional money that we receive.
Thank you. Okay, I have one thing.
Actually, I.
Council Blackmore?
So in 2025, according to the cherry sheet, which you can look up on the internet, you Google mass cherry sheets, and you look up the year and your community, it'll show you the breakdown of the different funds that we get from state money, not counting all the separate grants that we get. We got, they voted on 23 million 90,000 and change. We also got an additional money for Chapter 90, which is our road money, which is what, usually in the 400,000 ranges?
We're up to 627.
We're up to 627, yay. It's taken a while to get there. That's just, it comes from the state. One's for education, one is general aid, that we can do whatever we want, where it just offsets the budget. Additionally, there's school grants, there's municipal grants that the mayor's talked about, so a lot of the road work that we've done, all the neighborhood work that was done last summer, Eagle Street and all that, that all came from grants, didn't come out of our budgets. So, and it's hard, like she said, it's hard to stay on top of each year's audit and reporting. So there's that.
Thank you. Okay. The Planning Board has requested a joint meeting of the Planning Board and City Council to be set for 5:00 PM, May 12th, and it will be on ordinance number 12,471, which is the auxiliary dwelling units. And one more thing, due to councillor Oleskowitz's work schedule, he has indicated to me that he will not be able to continue serving as chairman for the time being. I have asked councillor Bona if he would take the role until councillor Oleskowitz is able to resume that position. And that's all I have.
Excuse me, councillor Sapienza, so you talked about the 80 units, I'm sorry, did I not hear you? Did you talk about this correspondence?
I'm gonna, I haven't got to correspondence yet.
Oh, okay.
Yep, we're getting there.
I'm just so excited.
We're getting there. We're getting there. Okay. All right, any other councillor updates? Court Leonazio, do you have any updates for us? If you do not, okay. I do have a correspondence, this is what the mayor's been waiting for. And the dear council president, Brian Sapienza, during the regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting on April 14th, 2025, the Planning Board unanimously approved a motion to recommend the offered amendments to the revised ordinances of the city of North Adams, Chapter Z, Section 10 dot 12, entitled License Marijuana Establishments, except all languages, all language changes regarding policy surrounding outdoor cultivation. This board does not recommend any changes to the ordinance that outlawed the outdoor cultivation of cannabis in the municipality. Thank you, signed Brian McSick, Chair of the North Adams Planning Board. Any other correspondence? Councillor Fitch?
Yes, a business person in town sent me an email and I wanted to read it because I thought it was an interesting concept. "Good morning, Andrew. I have long been frustrated," and it's fairly short, by the way. "I have long been frustrated with the number of empty storefronts downtown, specifically the storefronts that have been empty so long that they are apparently no longer code compliant and as a result uninhabitable, and the storefronts that appear to be abandoned. During my time in North Adams, seven and a half years, many business startup owners have complained to me that they would like to rent space downtown for their businesses, but there never seemed to be any spaces available to rent. It seems like one solution to the long-term lament by citizens of North Adams that there are no businesses downtown might be getting those empty spaces back up to code and available for businesses to occupy. I saw this LinkedIn article this morning, which discussed the Cambridge City Council's recent decision to call empty storefront owners to report in person and present their plans for their empty buildings to the city. This article focuses on one property in particular, but I thought the overall concept of calling the business owners to the map to understand the why of their empty buildings was interesting. I know it's a complicated issue and I'm not exactly offering a solution, so maybe this goes nowhere, but I thought it was worth forwarding. Thanks for listening, Anna."
Thank you. Okay, any other correspondence? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, meaning adjourn.